You're all set, Krista.
Thank you. Okay, it is seven o'clock. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Bloomfield Board of Education to order. Recognize that we have a quorum. We have five out of our seven members. Ms. Bogalas, the guy is absent and as well as Mr. Moore. Ask you to please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Wilkinson, would you please read our opening statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. As Secretary of the Board of Education, I wish to extend a one welcome to everyone present into our televised viewers. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate the achievement, review information, make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Bloomfield Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Bloomfield Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to policy, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and take policy for the district. We're not here to make management decisions or to solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. Meetings of the Board are open to the public. It is the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in public, in the public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confirmed, will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. The quorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your phones or communication devices and remain, refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it's legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for orderly, for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with the recording capabilities. I'm pleased that you've taken the time this evening to join us. We're very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Bloomfield Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Our item number four, consent agenda, a minutes from April 6, 2022. Mr. Freidman?
I moved that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the minutes from the April 6, 2022 special board meeting as presented.
Back it.
Been properly moved and second, any edits or corrections? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes? Item number five, recognition of our Cave Student Award winners for the 2021, 2022 school year. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board, colleagues, families in our viewing audience, joining us virtually. The agenda item under recognition is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Student Leadership Awards Presentations. This annual award program recognizes students in the middle and high school who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. To qualify as a recipient of this award, students must demonstrate diplomacy, be willing to take on challenges, possess the ability to work with others, and have the capability to make a diff, a difficult decision. Students awards will be delivered tomorrow by your school principal. Now, if you please welcome Dr. Trevor Ellis, Principal of Common A-Race Middle School, who will present the first award.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Thompson, BOE members and viewing audience. I'm Dr. Ellis, proud principal of Carmen A-Race Middle School. Tonight, I am honored to acknowledge our Cave Award winners. This year's winners include Kristen Bailey. Kristen is an outstanding student in all spec, all aspects of her school career. Kristen always, always goes above and beyond to ensure her work is accurate and well-presented, earning her several principal awards for the highest grade point average in her grade. Kristen takes a leadership role whether she is working with peers in a group, in the classroom setting, or in her role on the student council. With several outside interests, including dance competitions, Kristen is an all-around motivated, supportive, and very capable young woman. Congratulations, Kristen Bailey. Our next award, Cave Award winner, is Daniel Anton Bernard. Daniel is a pilot of a polite and respectful student whose academic competence and leadership skills have merited the recommendation for his teachers to receive the Cave Student Leadership Award. Daniel leads by example, both behaviorally and academically. Daniel is supportive of his peers, lending him, lending his knowledge and guidance to his fellow classmates, be it academic or socially emotional support. Daniel demonstrates strong leadership, perseverance, and motivation every day. Congratulations, Daniel Anton Bernard. And at this time, I would like to introduce JEM's Principal, Mr. Jeff Bernabi.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. It's my pleasure tonight to first, you know, acknowledge Mr. Brian Zaldivar. He's a grade nine student from New Britain, Connecticut. Brian has been with JEMs for two years. In his short time with us, Brian has shown himself to be a hard worker and a strong student. With a 3.75 grade point average, Brian's high-quality work and effort make him a leader in his academics among his peers. In his classes, he confidently expresses his thinking on different topics and stays respectful to his peers when he does this. Brian is also active outside of school. He enjoys sports, playing baseball and soccer during the year. He also enjoys spending time with his family and attends his local church. We look forward to the contributions Brian will continue to make to our JEMs community. Congratulations, Brian. I'd also like to recognize Ms. Amira Black. She's a seventh-grade student from Bloomfield. Amira is a great citizen of the Global Experience Magnet School community. She has an A-minus average in her classes and is often a role model for her peers in her schoolwork. In addition to being a hard-working and focused student, she takes the initiative to ask clarifying questions, is willing to work collaboratively with peers, and advocates for peaceful solutions when conflict arises among her peers. She is an example of what we want in a student leader, and we are pleased to be able to recognize her in this way. Although only a seventh grader, we are looking forward to helping her cultivate these skills as a member of the JEMs community. Congratulations, Amira. It's my pleasure now to introduce Mr. Jesse White, the Principal of Bloomfield High School.
Thank you so much. Today, I would like to honor Ethan Miranda. Ethan Miranda is a high school honors student who balances a rigorous academic schedule of AP, UConn, and honors-level classes. His hard work and dedication to his academics has paid off as he currently ranks fifth in the senior class at Bloomfield High School. Ethan has a special affinity for the environment and the outdoors, and has taken several agri-science courses at the Donald F. Harris Senior Agri-science and Technology Center. This year, as part of his agri-science studies, Ethan is working on an independent study project to create a walking trail in the community. Outside of school, Ethan has consistently volunteered in his community and serves as a student coach for the West Hartford Youth Hockey Program, where he teaches youngsters the basics of hockey and coordinates drills. Ethan is a self-motivated student who is not afraid to challenge himself. Congratulations, Ethan Miranda. I would also like to recognize Ms. Condalisa Coleman. Condalisa Coleman is an honors student who has challenged herself yearly by increasing the rigor of her schedule. As a senior, Condalisa is taking AP Calculus, Honors Physics, Honors Senior English, and several art courses to complement her intended major, Architecture. Her strong academic performance and character led her, led to her nomination and induction into the National Honor Society and Spanish Honor Society. Outside the classroom, Condalisa is actively engaged in numerous extracurricular activities, including young women's leadership in the track and field and volleyball teams. She also seeks out academic enrichment in activities to enhance her skills and personal growth. She has participated in ACE mentoring and was recently named Connecticut's Distinguished Young Woman for 2022. Condalisa will represent the state of Connecticut at the national competition in June. Congratulations, Condalisa Coleman. I will next transition to Dr. Trevor Ellis.
Jesse, Trevor has given his, uh, okay, that's okay. I'd like to say congratulations to all of the Cave Student Recipients. Job well done. Back to you, Board Chair, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Ed, I also want to throw my congratulations to all of the named students, Kristen, Daniel, Brian, Amira, Condalisa, and Ethan, for a job well done by all. Keep up the good work wherever you end up next year. I'm, for one, I'm going to say it over and over again. I really miss the opportunity to individually shake your hand, but giving you a virtual shake and again, a big congratulations. Thank you. Item B. I'm gonna ask Tammy Schondelmeier, who's going to make a big announcement on behalf of our, believe our boys' basketball team. Miss Schondelmeier?
So, hi, Mr. Harris. I'm sorry. You want me to make a big announcement about the basketball team?
Well, that's what I understand. They received an award?
So, yeah, so, um, the Board, six basketball officials, gave me the award for their commissioner, the Gerald T. McGrath Commissioner Award was on Thursday night. And they also acknowledged all the winners of the basketball championship during that time. So, obviously, our boys' basketball team won, so Kevin Moses was there. He actually surprised me with presenting me the award for the McGrath Award for Commissioner. So, that was a special. And then the other schools that also won that were being acknowledged, also were, were there and recognized.
Thank you, because I didn't read the whole doggone sentence. I apologize.
No problem.
As for, the award actually went to Miss Schondelmeier for Athletic Director of the Year. And and as I'm preparing myself to do special recognitions for you next month, I neglected this one. So, again, my congratulations for doing an outstanding job for many years.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very proud of what you have accomplished. Board members.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead, Mr. Freidman.
First of all, as you and I have been on for many, many years at this point on the Board of Education, regarding the Cave Leadership Award, that has been, have been one of our highlights over the years that we've always looked forward to. And of course, we do miss being able to stand up and congratulate each member, and hopefully we will be able to, to do that again at some point. So, I want to thank you all, and I appreciate our young people and their leadership skills. And it's always taking place in our town of Bloomfield, so we want to make sure everybody recognizes that. Secondly, Tammy Schondelmeier. Whenever I say that name, it brings me a smile. I want to congratulate you on your award. Well-deserved. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Howard. I appreciate you.
Mr. Wilkinson.
I'm gonna say congratulations as well to you, Tammy. Good job. Job well done. And also to the student recipients. You know, I actually happen to be a member of the Board of Directors for Cave. And, you know, I, I'm gonna tell you right now, I am so proud of all of you for all the accomplishments, all your hard work and dedication. Keep it up. The, the sky's the limit, and I want you guys to keep pushing. We, we, we look to see you, you guys, your names on a plaque somewhere on the school at some point with all the academic accomplishments that you have made. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Mr. Ike?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, excuse my, my camera's not working, but excuse my camera. But I wanted to say, congratulate all the students and, and all the students tonight, because this is one of the best times of the year, May and June. I think we have the Superintendent's Awards next month. But I, especially, not especially all the students, but I know Ethan, I think we've seen him every year for the last five or six years, when he was, I think, at Carmen A-Race All the Way Up, if I'm not mistaken. I think, not to be redundant, I think we've seen Ethan every year. So, want to congratulate all the students, and hopefully we'll have more and more and more students like this available for these awards. And I want to congratulate Miss Schondelmeier on her award with the, with the local council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Easeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say congratulations to all of our students receiving the Cave Award. We appreciate your leadership. You guys are doing awesome. We know school is tough as it is, but you are excelling. You're a great role models. We are grateful for your leadership. Keep doing what you're doing, and I wish you great success in the future. Also, Ms. Schondelmeier, congratulations, well-deserved award. I am not surprised at all. I don't know you personally, but I've heard great things about you and your athletic leadership as well. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I appreciate that. I'll just say, even my closing part, that it's obviously my honor to represent Bloomfield in my role as the Athletic Director. So, thank you for all your recognition, and I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Item number six on our agenda is the Student Representative from JEMs this month. Jawan Dejan Thomas and Kaylee Salins. You have the floor.
Good evening, Board of Education and community members.
Good evening.
Good evening. Before we get started, we want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Global Experience Magnet School. We hope that you enjoyed the presentation we prepared for you tonight. Next slide, please. Good evening. My name is Dejan Thomas. I'm, I'm from Hartford, Connecticut. I'm a 10th grader at Global Experience Magnet School at JEMs for four years. This is my first time presenting in front of the school board. I'm a member of the National Honor Society.
Hello, my name is Kylie Salins. I am from Hartford, Connecticut. I am currently an 11th grader here at JEMs. This is my first year at JEMs. I transferred from C-Prep at some point. I am very athletic and artistic, and this is my first time presenting in front of the Board. Next slide. JEM staff and students had had the opportunity to display their many talents at the JEMs Variety Show. Mr. Merdzak, Mr. Urbino, and Mr. Levine, aka The Bag Cats, opened the show with Country Road. Students performed songs, danced, and entertained their fellow classmates. Mr. Bernabi impressed the student body with his Beat the Old Man Challenge, in which students challenged him to push up, pull up, and plank in contests. Only one student was able to beat the old man. Thank you to the senior hosts, Matthew Goodwin and Amari Gary. Next slide, please.
National Honor Society has once again found a way to give back to our community. The third annual Pennyware helped to raise money to benefit My Sister's Place. Organization provides a safe and nurturing environment for those who find themselves without a home through a unique combination of services and support, guidance, and empowerment, encouragement, and outreach. Through this friendly competition between the grades, students and staff were able to raise money for a worthy cause. Next slide, please.
JEM's Spirit Days have been supporting the senior and junior classes throughout dress-down fundraisers, and have allowed everyone to have an excuse not to wear a uniform. Students and staff pulled out their best throwback gear, white t-shirts, and preschool attire. Some even dressed up for a grade debate. Next slide, please.
Grade six and seventh visited Old Sternbridge Village. 11th grade students took a trip to the Swift Factory and Parkville Market. They also visited UConn and Eastern Connecticut State University. These experiences enriched the educational environment and allow our students to explore and learn outside of the school building. Next slide, please.
Parents, students, and staff, as well as their families, followed up to skate and have fun. These events gave students time to connect outside of the school building. We look forward to monthly events like this next year. Next slide.
JEM societies are a school-based honor society that recognizes students who actively work towards bettering themselves academically and socially. Students that maintain quarter grades of 85% and above in each class, as well as serving as a role model for peers while being an active member of the JEMs community are accepted. Each quarter, these students are rewarded many different ways listed above. The Ruby level students listed here will be awarded with a dress-down day. Emerald level students will be awarded with a dress-down and a special breakfast. And Sapphire level students will be awarded with a dress-down day, special breakfast, and a $10 Amazon gift card. The final level is Diamond for Students in JEM Society for four quarters. Those students will be rewarded with a dress-down day, a gift card, and a JEM Society t-shirt. Next slide, please.
The JEM senior class has made decisions about their post-graduation plans. I'm looking forward to graduation. On this slide, as a list of schools seniors will be attending in the fall. Our seniors are still exploring options with colleges that have rolling admission. To celebrate the seniors, a senior signing day similar to a college athlete's signing day is being planned before graduation. Seniors that have officially committed to the colleges that are chorthor, Kyra Carpenter, who is going to Central Connecticut State University, Natavia Edwards, Western New England University, Amari Gary, Central Connecticut State University, Katrina Gibson, Morgan State University, Matthew Goodwin, Southern Connecticut State University, Aminata Mohammedu, Central Connecticut State University, Azani Nelson, University of Hartford, and Abdul Aziz, Central Connecticut State University. Next slide, please.
In review, JEM students are caring and supportive group. They continue to share random acts of kindness, many of which are done without anyone knowing.
Thank you for your time tonight, and if you have any questions, we would be happy to address them now.
Any questions from Board members? Comments? Let me lead, lead the group. I thank you for that presentation. It looks like JEMs is a wonderful place to be in school. Looks like you guys are enjoying yourselves, and and you're also learning a lot, not only from the books, but from your field trips that you're taking. And I am nothing but pleased to, to see that. Ms. Easeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, I can't even tell that you were first-time presenters. You guys did a great job. Thank you so much for the information. It does, echoing what Mr. Harris just said, it looks like a great time at JEMs. Looks like you guys have a lot of fun and learning at the same time. So, thank you for the information. You guys did great.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank you both, Kaylee and Dejan, for an amazing job with, given the presentation. I was able to really see some strong confidence and professionalism with you, given the presentation. And I'm really excited to see how many students are going off to these schools. I see a lot of bears and owls. I don't see any huskies, though. And so, you know, that's my alma mater, but I'm, I'm really excited for you guys. Great job over there at JEMs. I know you guys are doing some great work. Good job.
Thank you so much. It was our pleasure.
Thank you. Okay. Now, time for PTO, a public comment. Is there anyone out there that wishes to make a comment or to speak? Anybody wishing to speak? Last call. Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, moving on. Superintendent's Report. Update.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Harris. I have a short report today. It's very brief. A few items. First, I want to start with classroom walkthroughs. Cabinet members, including myself, have been conducting classroom walkthroughs with supplemental committees to monitor the quality of classroom instruction, curriculum rigor, and school climate. We are excited to start the high-stakes assessment for grades three through eight on Tuesday, May 17. The next item is high school graduation. Both Bloomfield High School and Global Experience Magnet School, JEMs, will conduct graduate, graduation ceremonies on Monday, June 13, 2022. The Bloomfield High School ceremony will start at 10:00 a.m. at Dunkin' Donuts Park in Hartford. And the JEMs High School graduation ceremony will start at 3:00 p.m. at the Bloomfield High School Courtyard. And the third item I have is partnerships. Bloomfield Public Schools, let's start, we have started a preliminary or preliminary talks with town, with the town manager, Stanley Hawthorne, and the Economic Development Director, Jennifer Valentino, to begin outreach efforts to business and corporations in Bloomfield. And the district is looking to build partnerships to support the academic achievement of our students. And the final item is health and safety. You will hear a recording from COVID-19 liaison, Wendy Shepherd Vanis. She was unable to attend. And this will conclude my report. So, we will hear her update.
Wendy? Is she muted?
Okay.
Though that uptick in data has been noted in our, has been across schools. Over the last 10 days, the average, at least six cases per day. Maybe the schools are reporting at least one case a day in the district. And that has been a challenge for staff and student attendance. That transmission rate is mostly noted due to community spread. As we monitor the data, we're noting the highest rates of positivity right after events like spring break, holidays such as Easter and Mother's Day, as people are relaxing protocols within their personal lives and going back to more normal habits around holiday and gatherings. During our meetings with the Department of Public Health and the State Department of Education, the Department of Public Health has noted that there is a shift in change in how they are monitoring data and COVID-19 disease across the nation. The shift is now from prevention of spread of the virus to prevention of hospitalizations and severe illness, which is why you see the continuing relaxation of the protocols. relaxation of the protocols right now. So this comes from the Department of Public Health. Your data surveillance tracker can check any of this data down at the website below. But as you can see, they're monitoring hospitalizations across the county level. They do not have that broken down into the community level. But you can see that the highest rates of hospitalization go along that red vein that has been really highly noted for COVID nineteen spread across the state of Connecticut since the beginning of the pandemic. So highest rates are there. But relative to severe illness since the beginning of the pandemic, things are in, according to the Department of Health, a much more manageable control. So you can see these low rates of critical and severe illness over here as compared to the very high peaks and valleys that we have noted since the beginning of March two thousand and nineteen over the past few years of, of the pandemic. At our disposal now, and the tools to be most critically used are of course vaccinations are available to us. And also treatment for when people at hospital for severe disease, severe illness for COVID nineteen. So with that, we continue to track the tools that we have in Bloomfield and our vaccinations being number one mitigation tool. This comes from the department, the West Hartford Bloomfield Department of Public Health data page. They were tracking across the state vaccination rates back in February. So they have just relegated right now their data page to West Hartford and Bloomfield. But compared to the state rates in February, you can see that Bloomfield has been on a gradual incline and this is their data to date. So you can see we are closer to those state averages but still trailing a little behind in our older adolescents at this time. We're continuing to use our testing tools as well to prevent spread. I'm happy to announce that the state announced at the PCR testing with our partnership request diagnostics could not only be open to students, but they've been up to staff as well. So all of our staff have availability, you know, the PCR test would be convenience of doing that right here in our schools. And PCR testing is also available to students in six of our seven schools. In order to partner with Quest, you needed a minimum of twenty students per school that were interested in that weekly testing. And we've been able to do that in six of our seven schools. With the exception of gems right now, which did not generate that level of interest. Home test kits are available on an as needed basis. We have a plethora of them and we are using these tools to continue to prevent spread and monitor illness. And we hand those out readily across the schools in the district. We're continuing our mitigation strategies because we are continuing to take the virus seriously here in Bloomfield. So even though there's been a relaxing of the protocols across the state and we are now in a mask optional phase, we will revert to requiring either classrooms or individuals to revert back to mask requirements. If we see an uptick in illness or clusters and outbreaks within the schools, we have on one occasion requested a class to continue masks. And we will even revert back to a ten day quarantine if needed to prevent that spread, that spread of virus. Since we have gone with mask optional debate, we have not seen a cluster. We saw one stir prior to us going mask optional that made us go back to a ten day quarantine for a classroom and require them to wear masks, but that was even prior to us going mask optional. We're continuing our social distancing requirements to the greatest extent possible. And continuing our virtual meetings as needed. Our events, we are planning on a case by case basis. So we can do them as safely as possible while also doing the delicate balance of making sure that we are offering to our community and our students those events that we all look forward to during the school year. So all of them are in prior approval by Dr. Thompson and they are reviewed by the faculty team. We are looking for events to be as outdoors as possible. If they are large gatherings, we are requiring them to be masked events and making sure that we are adhering to social distancing protocol. That concludes my presentation for this morning and I will turn this back over to Chairman Harris. Thank you.
Okay, Wendy stand by because I, I figured there may be a couple of questions coming your way.
Wendy is not available. That's why she gave the
Yeah. That was a tape. Well, let me just throw that to you, Dr. Thompson. You know, there's been a lot of, obviously, everybody is aware of the state numbers which are going up and up and up. Have you heard of any conversation about the state reinstituting a mask mandate or?
No, Doc, they not even, haven't even suggested that they would go in that direction. So what we're doing at Bloomfield is that we're monitoring the, the metrics. We're, you know, requesting everyone to be as safe as possible to continue with the protocols. We're in the schools and I'm happy to say that most folks are wearing masks. And there are social distancing.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Question, are we still requiring all our staff to be fully vaccinated?
Well, you know, the state has relaxed that, Mr. Ike, in terms of a requirement is recommended.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fryman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I, I thank Miss Vannish for always keeping this up to date. And most of us are quite often in the schools and I, I noticed many of our teachers and our staff and our young people continue to wear masks. In my own personal view, I think that's the wise thing to do through this pandemic. I do have one additional question for Dr. Thompson. I've noticed throughout Bloomfield, we've been having this campaign for our schools. And I was just wondering if you might have additional information about that campaign or Stan Simpson regarding folks moving into Bloomfield and utilizing our, our school system.
Well, you know, first and foremost, thanks for asking that question and we do have a very aggressive, active campaign to make folks aware of the great things that are happening in Bloomfield. And that they will continue to consider number one, families to keep their, their children in the Bloomfield Public Schools and also some who have left. We are also appealing to them to take a look at what's going on in Bloomfield and consider returning.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I thank you. Financial update, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, and good evening to the members of the Board of Education. This report is as of May fifth, twenty twenty-two. At this time, approximately five hundred nine thousand dollars or one point one two percent remains in the budget. Now, please note that on this one-page summary report, account number zero one certified salaries, the available balance increased by seventy-nine thousand dollars from last month because the special education out of district tuition receivable for the month of March was booked. Also on the summary page, tuition major account zero eight remains with a deficit in the amount of approximately nine hundred forty-one thousand dollars. This tuition deficit increased by thirty-three thousand dollars from last month because for additional correct invoices were received for special education services. You can turn to page four of the detailed report. On page four, you will note that the three tuition sub-accounts continue to be over budget. These deficits will be offset by one anticipated revenue from the excess cost grant in the amount of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, which we expect to receive this month. And two, available balances in other accounts. The district, at this particular point, we are asking all cost center managers to close out any open purchases, any, any open purchase orders and, and conferences in preparation of closing out the fiscal year on June thirtieth. Mr. Harris just concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Any questions? Okay. Old business, Portrait of a Graduate, Dr. Thompson and the, and the team.
Thank you. Tonight, I am excited to share with you our Portrait of a Graduate strategic plan. This work began in March of twenty twenty-one. Our community members, families, students and educators collaborated on a town-wide initiative to help enhance the district's vision of a successful high school graduate. Over the course of several months, community forums were held with town council, town and district partners, faith-based organizations, business leaders and institutions of higher learning. We looked at three important questions to frame our work. Number one, what are the hopes and dreams that the community has for our young people? The second question, what are the academic skills our children need to, for success? And the third question, what are the implications for the learning experiences we provide in our schools? A portrait design team was formed. They evaluated over thirty different competencies and the replies to the three questions. This helped them decide on the quality needed to succeed in our twenty-first century global economy. The design team agreed on four competencies. Problem solver, critical thinker, communicator and adaptable. These competencies will be used by our instructional staff as a blueprint to prepare students for future success. To continue, our work subcommittees were formed to address several areas of interest identified by our community. Early childhood, talented and gifted, educational technology, curriculum alignment, school climate, family and community engagement and holistic accountability. At this time, I will introduce Emery Coleman, curriculum specialist and the design team presenters who will guide us through the strategically in goal areas, objectives, strategies and outcomes. Emery.
Emery, you're muted.
You're muted, Emery.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Good evening, Chairman Harris, Board of Ed members. Tonight, as Doctor said, we will be presenting to you the Portrait of a Graduate strategic plan. As Doctor mentioned in his remarks, he talked about this portrait of a graduate is kind of has become our symbol. And to Board of Ed members, this was the strategic plan that you all received today. And tonight, we will be presenting a PowerPoint and hopefully explaining where we started from and where we are right now in our Portrait of a Graduate for the Bloomfield Public School System. On the next slide, we see our purpose, which is to provide an update on the strategic plan. Our process will be to discuss the alignment with our four district priorities and to share the new goals and strategies specific to our Portrait of a Graduate work. And finally, the payoff will be successfully implementing all of the strategies listed resulting in a comprehensive and rigorous curriculum designed for student success in the twenty-first century. On the next slide, we see our vision, our mission and our theory of action. We realized the need for the entire district to coalesce and pull in the same direction as one team from pre-K to graduation. As you know, we held community forums, put together design team and began to meet. This slide shows the vision. Our graduates will be academically, socially, emotionally and technologically equipped to pursue purposeful professions and careers. Our mission then became to prepare every student to become a lifelong learner based on our competencies. And in order to get our students there, our theory of action would include a collaborative accountability plan and system based on data and strengthening adult work in our district. So learning for all students will improve. I now would like to introduce Mrs. Lynn Weisel, a Bloomfield District parent and a member of the design team.
Good evening. Next slide, next line please. Tonight, I will speak about the Portrait of a Graduate timeline. We began in February twenty twenty-one when a design team of stakeholders was formed, comprised of members both inside and outside of the school system who are all vested in student success. We began to meet as a team in March twenty twenty-one and then every month after that. We created our portrait based on the ideas and inspiration from our community and narrowed these insights down to the portrait you see today. From here, we identified competencies, skills and priorities that would help our portrait come to life. Our portrait was shared with the Board of Ed in May twenty twenty-one and then shared with the community in June. Right after that, starting in summer twenty twenty-one, we began to work on our strategic plan. Our design team broke into the subcommittees, Educational Technology, Talented and Gifted, Early Childhood Data, Family Connection, which was my team, College and Career Readiness, Curriculum Alignment and School Climate. These subcommittees worked from October to April to design and develop the objectives and strategies needed to bring the portrait to life. Tonight, we are sharing with you our strategic plan. We want to mention that this is a living document and we fully expect it to change and, and add to it as time goes on. Next slide please. So what is the Portrait of a Graduate? The Portrait of a Graduate is the vision for the strategic plan gathered from the greater Bloomfield community, including everyone from town council and families to business leaders and institutes of higher learning. As the larger community, we answered these three important questions. What are the hopes and dreams our community has for our young people? What are the academic skills and habits of mind our children need for success? What are the implications for the learning experience we provide in our schools? The answers to these questions helped us to identify and align within our curriculum learning experiences for our students to succeed and prosper in a global economy and to prepare them for the challenges ahead. And now I'd like to introduce Jason Titlebaum.
Lynn, throughout our process of creating our Portrait of a Graduate strategic plan, we wanted to ensure this work would be aligned with our ongoing work. To make sure this happened, we aligned our Portrait of a Graduate to the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty four District Plan of Excellence. Each priority, priority area has objectives and strategies aligned to ensure we can meet all goals outlined. Strategies identified throughout the process will help us achieve our goals, but we know our, our work will evolve and new strategies might be added where and when needed. I'll be touching on priority one, holistic accountability. Anne Marie Cullen, Curriculum Specialist, will be speaking to our goal areas for priority two, rigorous curriculum instruction and assessment. Priority three, positive school climate, will be highlighted by Sarah Williams, Principal of Carmen Ares Intermediate School. And Keisha Ma-Jones, District Coordinator of Extended Learning and Family Community Engagement, will discuss priority four, family and community engagement. There are two main objectives that were identified for holistic accountability. The first is the creation of a public-facing data dashboard to ensure all stakeholders know how Bloomfield Public School students are doing. These dashboards will highlight attendance and academic performance of our students in a way for everyone to see how data is being used. Our second objective is to streamline the data sharing process through Power School. As we moved to a central registration process last year, families were able to create their own Power School parent portal accounts. We want to take this opportunity to ensure our schools are using this platform to the greatest extent, so families receive information in a timely manner. With these accounts, families can get updates via email or a smartphone app to see what is happening with their child in school. At this time, I'd like to reintroduce Anne Marie Cullen to speak about priority two, rigorous curriculum instruction and assessment.
As you will hear, as I continue going through priority two, many of our big objectives are under this priority. Our first one is early childhood. Early childhood objective one has already started the school year. Our principals from Wintonbury and Laurel meet on a monthly basis with the Early Childhood Collaborative, who are the providers in our community. Also, Mrs. Straker, Principal of Wintonbury, sits on the readiness council. This committee has worked very hard to partner with area preschools to ease the transition to kindergarten and to provide parents with information regarding kindergarten readiness. The early childhood objective two, to open a preschool readiness program at Laurel Elementary School by the fall of twenty twenty two. We are actually happy to announce that the Bloomfield School District Readiness Grant was awarded and a readiness program will open in the fall of twenty twenty two. We are also having ongoing meetings with the Office of Early Childhood. We will be following the curriculum and program offered at Wintonbury for our class. Early childhood objective three, Bloomfield Public Schools will explore the implementation of an early literacy academy at Laurel School to ensure that all of our students entering grade three are reading at grade level. We had our first meeting last week with the school-based committee on the Literacy Academy. We discussed the impact we want to make on reading across the curriculum and family and community involvement. Our next area, our next goal area is twenty first century-aligned curriculum. Our objective is that by graduation, our students will be successful in a global environment because they will have been offered a standards-based curriculum, project-based learning opportunities, and curriculum alignment K five and six twelve. Our next area, Talented and Gifted, was to implement a talented and gifted program beginning the spring of twenty twenty two, which we have completed. We have partnered with the University of Connecticut and the Rinzelli Learning Program. Classes have started at CASE and CAMHS. And after testing is completed, after that's the SBAK testing is completed, we will be holding our nomination and parent meetings at Metacomet and at Global Experience Magnet Schools. So we're very excited about this program. We visited it yesterday, and it's off the ground and running with our students in CASE and CAMHS. The next goal area is Educational Technology. Objective one is to prepare students to thrive in a constantly changing techno- technology landscape. We want to align curriculum with the International Society for Technology and Educational Standards. It's called the ISTI standards, which means instruction would begin in kindergarten and would focus in kindergarten on computational thinking, problem-solving, programming concepts, and digital concepts, obviously on the level of four and five-year-olds. In grades one through five, coursework would focus on empowering students to use computer science as a medium for creativity, communication, and problem-solving. And in grade six through twelve, our plan is that computer science course topics will include programming, the internet, big data, and privacy. And will provide hands-on experiences for our students. Objective two is to provide professional staff, professional development to our staff to prepare them to teach in this constantly evolving technological landscape. And finally, to align our purchases of technology that will provide hands-on experiences for our students. I now would like to introduce Mrs. Sarah Williams, Principal of Carmen Ares Intermediate School.
Good evening, everybody. So I have the pleasure of talking about priority three, which is positive school climate as the co-chair for the committee with my Dean of Students, Eileen Richters. The two objectives you see in front of you, objective number one, providing ongoing professional development to all new staff members on the district initiatives. So far this evening, you have already heard many initiatives that come forward. When new staff comes aboard, we need to create an onboarding system for them so that no matter which school you are in, no matter which grade you are in, all staff has the same common language, and everybody knows the district initiatives. We're going to have a new staff orientation plan with the key district initiatives, including Portrait of a Graduate, welcoming school protocols, social-emotional learning initiatives. All staff is going to continue to be trained on the collaborative and proactive solution models, which is started many years ago, but continued its implementation next school year under the direction of the Office of Student Support Services. Objective number two, all staff will effectively utilize climate survey data to improve culture as evidenced by the state climate standards. We talk about climate surveys often, but we're going to ensure that we develop strategies to improve school climate and culture. Students, staff, and families all take the climate survey yearly. This will help empower students to develop individualized and differentiated action plans for themselves. The climate committees at each of the school buildings will review monthly attendance and discipline to ensure that the data is collected by school climate specialists and shared through our SRBI process and at the data teams. We're going to create opportunities for staff and students to practice problem-solving scenarios through the collaborative and proactive solutions model and the CASL frameworks, which are social awareness, self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills, all important to be successful as a graduate from Bloomfield Public Schools as well. It is my pleasure to now announce priority number four, Ms. Keisha Ma-Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Principal Williams. As you mentioned, I will be sharing priority four, which is family and community engagement. This priority had two area goals. And the first, the first priority being parent and community engagement with objective one, being that all staff members will participate in ongoing social and emotional professional training to support students, families, and other staff members. We will have up to six events per school so that the staff get a chance to meet with their families and we, and, and, and find out what their needs are. Each school will, each school will convene a family-school partnership, meeting or team at each school, which is like a PTO, but changing the, the name starts to, starts to make that bond between that school-home partnership. So that parents know that this is a partnership and that we share responsibilities and that we share the decision-making for, for their students. We will also provide an opportunity for families and community members to participate in school events. We want our families not only to participate and engage, but to showcase their strengths. And we have a lot of families that have skills and strengths that we want them to showcase so that they can help other families in our district. The second objective is that all schools will create a family and community engagement committee by spring twenty twenty three. So we're asking that each school recommends parents, staff members, and community partners that they work with in their school to be a part of this team. This, this team right here was, would select meeting topics that center on creating equity, diversity, and social-emotional learning strategies throughout family engagement activities and meetings. We use the family-school and community engagement to navigate and guide us through which workshops our families want and need so that we, so that we can then make partnerships to provide those needs. The second goal area and priority four is college and career readiness. The first objective is to create additional opportunities and partnerships for students in relevant career experiences by fall twenty twenty three. The strategy for this objective would be to hire a career specialist, focus on expanding opportunities and exploring additional career-oriented areas. For example, like manufacturing, education, insurance, and the medical field to build a robust marketing strategy to enhance the students' work experience so that they get a firsthand at trying the different careers before they choose a career path or before they pick a degree program. We also want them to, we also want to ensure that our high school program provide exposure to career-based programs for our students and to increase course offerings to students based on college and career interests by twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year. The second objective in this priority for area, sorry, in this goal is to expand the partnership with, with the Connecticut Children's Medical Center and the Advanced Research Mentoring Course through the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. And the strategies for this objective is to identify students to participate in the CCMC Pipeline Program as well as to create a mentoring course and curriculum that can be offered in ally health. The third and final objective in family and community engagement is to increase the program offering at the Donald F. Harris Senior Agribusiness Science and Technology Center. We want to, so some of the, the strategies that we want to use for this is to survey students, families, and community partners to identify areas of interest and to create a pathway and programs aligned to the areas of interest, as well as to create a marketing technique to share the program offerings to our families and to our community members. Thank you, and I'll hand it back over to Anne Marie Cullen.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And finally, our outcomes are around each of the goal areas that we have discussed with you this evening. And a quick review of holistic accountability is that we are looking towards the alignment of K-12 standards and reporting of data will be streamlined to share information with all stakeholders. Our goal area of early childhood, as I mentioned earlier, we look forward to the opening of a readiness class at Laurel Elementary School and for our team to remain active members of the community preschool directors meeting. Twenty first century-aligned curriculum, we have been working very hard on the goal of the Literacy Academy to focus on foundational reading and language skills to ensure that our students are reading on or above grade level by grade three and also aligning our curriculum pre-K to grade twelve. Talented and Gifted Program, as I mentioned earlier, we have opened up. We started in the spring of twenty twenty two. And we have two teachers of the Talented and Gifted. We are working very closely with UConn in the Rinzoli Learning Center. And we had a wonderful opening night for our parents. It was virtual, but it was still a wonderful opening. And our students are truly enjoying the Talented and Gifted Program. And Educational Technology, I'm goal area. Again, we are looking at the implementation of the ISTI standards across the K-12 curriculum. And as I said earlier, we are really looking to start in pre-K K all the way through to have our students really aware of technology. Our positive school climate, you heard from Mrs. Williams, that our climate specialists administer climate surveys. And we get the information from parents, staff, and students to really analyze and to review and to see where we need to make changes in our school environment or what we're doing that is, is working well. As Ms. Jones talked about, parenting community engagement, our plan is to create school-based family and community engagement committees. This will provide each school with really getting information from parents in the community and what their expectations are. And then finally, our college and career readiness, we're very excited that we will be hiring a career specialist who will work in the middle school students to start with some career inventories, so we make sure our students are on the right path from middle school all the way through high school to be able to secure the career or the job that they would like to pursue in the future. On the next page, these are some quotes from our stakeholders. These are not all of them. There are two pages of them. There's still more in our actual book, but again, we have quotes from stakeholders in the areas of special education, English learners, parents, and teachers and staff. And finally, we have our acknowledgement page, and I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Thompson.
Thank you very much. I would like to thank all the members of the design team. We are grateful to the students, teachers, administrators, Board of Education members, parents, and business and community leaders who collaborated with us to develop a Portrait of a Graduate Strategic Plan. We believe that this work will move our district forward as we prepare our students for college and also meaningful careers. I would also like to recognize Anne Marie Cullen and also Jason Titobon for their exceptional leadership on this initiative. And thank you for your service tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. And thank you, Anne Marie, Jason, and the entire POG team for just an outstanding job and the development of this Portrait of a Graduate and our strategic plan going forward. You just, it's, you've knocked it out of the box. But I'm going to turn it back to my fellow board members, Mr. Fryman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely. This was a baseball game. No, no extra innings. You've done great here. I think we're all very proud of, proud of you and the staff. And I'm also very happy to see regarding us setting up partnerships and increasing our technology. As Colin had mentioned, in regards that you'll be looking at what's working and what's not working as you begin the process. Can you give us a juxtaposition regarding, you know, would you be looking at the process quarterly, once a year? Ongoing, what would that look like?
Let me just begin, and I'll let Anne Marie join in on my comments. This is, is an ongoing plan. We will be meeting on a regular basis as we implement these initiatives that we have. We have very clear outcomes that we will be reporting to you and the community in terms of what we're setting out to achieve. So this is, will be a very ongoing, active plan and process. And you will receive updates on an ongoing basis.
And if I could just add, as we mentioned, we have several small committees, subcommittees that have really done a lot of the work, and they will be continuing to meet and continuing to monitor outcomes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that informative presentation. I commend all the efforts that everyone's putting into this initiative. It's, it's fabulous. It's great. I feel like we're touching every corner of, of the student that we need to touch, and I think it's fabulous. I do have a couple of questions, though. So the first one is about the Um I do have a couple of questions, though. Uh so the first one is about the holistic accountability. Um you know, I know we've always taken great pride in the date uh the data teams that we had, um looking at all the student data. Um will this this particular strategy be embedded into the plan? And if so, are we going to have to switch it up a little bit? Um you know, the way that we collect the data and, you know, interpret it just to kind of make it a little bit more meaningful.
I think that's um Jason Titlebomb's wheelhouse. Jason?
So um thank you for the question, Ms. Eastman. Um so we're definitely gonna be embedding embedding it into our existing practices. Um and as we continue to move forward, um we will continue to use data um to make informed decisions. But what we also wanted to do is make sure that families were able to get the information um easily, whether it would be through a public-facing dashboard or directly onto phones um through the um programs that Power School already has. Um so that was the goal of this, is to get the information out and to make information more readily available so we can make um quick decisions.
Right, thank you. Um other question is, so the this is the RCIA, the Educational Technology piece of it. Um so we're gonna do professional development for staff. Um how? I know we're we're putting a lot on our teachers again. Um and I'm just wondering if they're okay? Are they faring well with, you know, learning um new technologies and new ways to do things? I know we have a a lot of new programs out there. Um you know, I just I I'm afraid for them, but I know they're capable. It's just a lot. So you know, how how are we gonna roll all of this out? How are we gonna make sure that um you know, when when they do learn, you know, all all the new stuff that um you know, the that their mental health is okay um with all this and still teaching the classes that they normally have to teach?
You know, that's an excellent question, and I I'll let I'll begin and I'll let Anne Marie, she can uh chime in afterwards, whatnot. And it's a it's a balancing act, and you have to be very careful that you do not um if you don't go overboard with the uh, you know, with having professional development for staff. So it is a it's a we and we're in uh communication with our staff about the PD. We have a district professional development team. So it's something that we do in in collaboration with our teachers.
And thank you. Thank you for that question, Mrs. Eastman, because um we are grappling with it. Um as Dr. said, we do have a professional development committee. But um which is district-based, but in our our plan itself, almost every subcommittee came up with the need for some professional development. Um so what we are going to ask them to do is each subcommittee really has to um kind of fill out, we have this professional development form. If you want to give professional development or you feel your staff needs it in a particular area, in this case, it would be the areas in our plan uh that may require it. And then we really need to sit down and look at scheduling. We just have so many days and so many hours. So it might have to go over a year or two, but we really feel strongly that um some of our students um are way ahead of us with um technology. And um we we really need to um look at those standards and um teach our kindergarteners through our twelfth graders with courses or classes to make sure that they're ready for this um century.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilkerson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I I thought it was a very um comprehensive presentation. I guess I'm wondering if there's a scorecard um that's been developed to measure, um you know, how well we're doing um and for tracking purposes of, you know, and and timeline. And um to see what we can do to turn the curve, if there, you know, are areas that we can, you know, um and I don't like to say challenge, but also but use the word opportunities for um development. And so um is that something you can speak to, Ms. Cullen?
Yes, Mr. Wilkerson, thank you for the question. Um as I said, our subcommittees will start meeting again as after, you know, once we got to this part. This um this plan, we will have one more design team meeting and go through this again. And then um the role that the subcommittees will play will really be oversight to the objectives that come under their subcommittee tied to the priority. Um like I said, you know, we have, we're starting a um a preschool class, but that was in here, but now we need to, you know, advertise, get our students, have open houses, um write the curriculum, all those things. So yes, each subgroup will be working on a timeline um and a report card almost um to make sure that we're meeting our time schedule and that um you know, we're doing it effectively and efficiently.
And also, if I may add, the uh the dashboard that will be created will reflect uh exactly uh all the areas that we are working on and the progress that we're making.
Thank you.
Ms. Eastman.
Thank you. Sorry, one more question. Um so objective three, which is absolutely fantastic. I love that. Um our our third graders are gonna be reading and reading well, so that that that's very important, and I'm so happy that's there. Um so can you just kind of add a little bit of color to what kind of experiences that um the families are gonna have in this process? And you know, how how are we gonna bring all that together? You know, third grade is young, so I mean, clearly, we're gonna have to have some parental involvement there to to get that pushed forward.
This is something new we're taking up, taking on uh, and it will be in a a big goal for us next year in creating this literacy academy. Uh and uh it's very ambitious in terms of what we're trying to achieve to ensure that students entering grade three, leaving second grade, those students, all students will be reading at or above grade level. And so uh this is a a new project. It's a new initiative. It's very ambitious. And we will be involving parents along the way as we create uh this academy.
Mrs. Eastman, we're looking at a holistic approach to the young child. Um there's a lot of information out. In fact, the State Department of Education just sent out a white paper on the science of reading. So we have been doing lots of research on that and the science of reading in particular to um our young learners, um how they develop um right, left, uh right brain, left brain, et cetera. Um so we're looking at that. We're doing lots of research um in it. And um University of Connecticut has a program and our leaders, um Mrs. Straker and Jen Dwyer, the principal of Laurel School, will be attending um some professional development for themselves on um reading by grade three and what it looks like. Um so we're excited about them going out and getting their professional development to bring it back into their staff. But we're really, as I said, um looking at a holistic approach around um the not just the classroom teacher, um but the reading coach, the um speech and and language pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapy, like all those um parts that help to develop a young child. So we're really um, you know, thinking out of the box on what on what this can look like in our school system.
Thank you. Mr. Ike?
To Chairman, as usual, um the presentation was outstanding to the high standards. We've come to be look for from Dr. Thompson and his team. Just have a question on the metrics. When do you think we'll get uh results of this uh Portrait of a Graduate, which I remember I I started uh probably three, four, three or four years ago at one of the K conventions, had a big presentation, and then you guys just took the ball and ran with it. What do you think we'll see the metrics down the road of how we're how our students are impacted by this Portrait of a Graduate and the community?
We're going to, that's a good question, and we're gonna begin to show uh the outcomes uh, you know, immediately uh starting with summer school. We have things that we're going to incorporate into our summer school program that aligns with the Portrait of a Graduate. So we will be reporting to you, the community, on an ongoing basis relative to the outcomes that we have established.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
They will also be able to be picked up by the community on the dashboard, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add that we're really looking at the trajectory from pre-K to grade twelve. So you know, our pre-K early childhood kids have the the new um pre-K right in one of our buildings. And I have to tell you, we're getting, we haven't even really put it out there yet, and we're getting phone calls, you know, um every day about can I have a seat in the in the program? Um and then we move from Laurel into Metacomet, and we're working on making sure that kids that arrive at Metacomet by third grade are are able to read in our grade level. And then we move um to the intermediate school, and now we start really um, you know, looking at the fifth and sixth grade, you know, learner. Um Talented and Gifted moves in, SCL, Social and Emotional Learning moves in. Um our seventh and eighth grade, we're looking at moving that career specialist down there so that um our seventh and eighth graders have an idea of what um a career inventory looks like and what they might be interested in. And then obviously, um at GEMS and at the high school, we're looking to really tighten up our curriculum, make sure kids are ready, have career opportunities um to go out into the community, and that's really where we need support from the community. So our we hope our career specialists will be knocking on doors and getting our kids out in the business community, in the health community, and et cetera. What we've seen is their interest coming up through seventh and eighth grade. So, Mr. Ike, that's our idea to really tie it in from pre-K all the way through to when our our kids are leaving our door.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Um item B on the new business is uh policies, uh second reading. Uh now, for those of you not aware, the second reading means that this is the second time it has become before the Board of Ed in a full meeting. Uh but it's also come before the Policy Committee of the Board uh twice. So uh this is essentially the fourth time that we are looking at uh these two policies. And uh so, Mr. Guzman, we're gonna take them one at a time, and I'll turn it to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh policy six, one, five, nine, Individualized Education Program, Special Education Program. Uh this is the result. This policy is a result of a court decision, AR versus Connecticut State Board of Education. Where all students with disabilities who have not yet turned twenty-two years of age and who have not received a regular high school diploma remain eligible for special education services um from a high school. This policy, uh this is a model policy that we received from Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, uh Policy Development Unit, and uh the uh this policy six, one, five, nine is a result of this decision by the court. It was revised to be in compliance with this court ruling and directed from the uh State Department of Education. So you can see that uh on the first page, that uh bold language and capitalized language is all brand new to this uh particular policy, recommend adoption.
Okay, Mr. Fryman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Board of Education approve the adoption of policy six, one, five, nine, Individualized Education Program, Education Program.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? Motion is carried. Mr. Guzman?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Um board policy four, two, one, two, Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus Drivers. Um this is a policy as a result of the US Department of Transportation. Uh amending the rules for the Commercial Driver's License Drug Testing Program to establish requirements for the Commercial Driver's License Drug and Alcohol Clearinghouse. Uh the clearinghouse contains records of violations of drug and alcohol prohibitions. And this regulation requires an employer to make an inquiry to the clearinghouse for applicants for a driver's uh CDL driver position, such as a school bus driver. Um again, this language is a uh required by a federal mandate and is uh is a model from the uh Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. Recommend approval of this policy.
Thank you. Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the Board of Education approve the adoption of policy four, two, one, two, Drug and Alcohol Testing for School Bus Drivers.
Second.
Probably moves in second. Any comments? Any comments? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, uh Bloomfield Federation of Educational Personnel. Mr. Maletti, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh thank you, Mr. Harris, board members, Superintendent Dr. Thompson and the viewing audience. Um the district recently completed negotiations with the Bloomfield Federation of Education Personnel, uh the BFEP. And that represents classified school staff in the district. Um so major provisions of the new contract are that it is this year a four-year, at this time, a four-year contract, which will go from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-six. Uh the wages uh represented over the four years, we'll see a general wage increase of two percent in year one, three percent with no step in year two, two and a half percent increase plus step in year three, and in year four, it'll be a two point five uh with no in uh two point five percent increase with no step. Uh what also changes is that the premium cost share for the BFEP employees will go from fifteen to seventeen percent. The employees will pay seventeen percent in the first three years of the contract and then eighteen percent in year four. The incentive payment for the BFEP has been removed. And then all new members as uh hired July first or after of two thousand twenty-two in the district will be enrolled in the new defined contribution plan for retirement. No new members will be able to participate uh in the Town of Bloomfield Pension Plan. Employees prior to July first, two thousand twenty-two, hired before that date, uh will continue to be in the Town of Bloomfield Pension Plan. It is the district's recommendation that the board approve this contract, sir.
You heard the uh recommendation from our HR Director, Mr. Dan Maletti. Uh Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the tentative agreement between the Bloomfield Board of Education and the Bloomfield Federation of Educational Personnel for the period of July one, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six, as presented.
Second.
It's been probably moved in second. Questions? Um I've got this, I've got one, Mr. Maletti, of uh this for uh the benefit of everyone out there, the those that may not know who are classified employees.
So that's they're they're a very important part of the district. Um the BFEP represents our tutors, our instructional assistants, uh our class, those that work our early childhood instructional assistants, uh our administrative assistants. Um very important pieces uh of the district. And includes our data systems managers and uh some executive administrative assistants in schools and in the Board of Education.
Thank you. Um any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? That the record show the motion was uh passed unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Maletti.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Guzman? New policy?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, this policy um was presented to the Policy Committee for initial reading review on April twenty-sixth. It is before the Board of Education on May tenth for an initial reading by the entire board. The Office of Civil Rights uh proposed new rules to amend Title Nine regulations. Uh, these became effective on August fourteenth, uh twenty twenty. Uh, new regulations define sexual harassment um as conduct on the basis of sex that satisfies one one or more of the um provisions that are listed on page two of your board policy. So I don't want to read those to you, but uh those are the um the three elements of this new regulation. Uh, districts are required to respond promptly in a manner that is not deliberately uh indifferent and uh to any, any potential sexual harassment complaint um by a member of the staff or a member of the student body. A new provision requires any employee who receives a report of prohibited conduct based on sex to notify the Title Nine Coordinator. Uh, the Title Nine Coordinator for the District is uh Mr. Malletti, Director of Human Resources. The new provision directs the superintendent to develop Title Nine formal complaint process, which we are in a process of doing right now in the form of a regulation to this policy. The um, the policy also requires staff to be trained to recognize potential sexual harassment so that, and that's all, all district employees and um which we do uh and have been doing on a regular basis um throughout to ensure that staff are are uh are aware of the um the elements of a potential sexual harassment complaint. So at this particular point, this policy is on the agenda for an initial review. Thank you.
Okay, uh, again, this is uh coming before the full board for a first time reading. It's been before the Policy Committee once. It's gonna go back in front of the Policy Committee at our next meeting. And uh, we will vote on it at our next full board meeting. But uh, still, if you have any questions or concerns, uh board members uh love to hear them. Any questions, concerns, comments? Ms. Eastman?
Thank you. Um, just the language that's in here, was that something um that we drafted or are we getting bits and pieces from somewhere else or is this coming strictly from higher up?
Uh, no, this, this language here, uh we work very closely with the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Policy Review uh Department, if you will. And uh, so this, this language and this policy sample came from from Cave um and in Cave's notations to us, this was a policy that was really developed nationwide um across the um, across all fifty states. So uh, it's not only, the language not only uh pertains to Connecticut, but obviously through throughout the, throughout the country because it is a, one that's uh regulated by the Office of Civil Rights.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Guzman.
Thank you.
Item eleven is uh Cave Update. The biggest uh update that uh I can speak about is approximately uh three weeks ago. Uh, it became official, Bob Rader, a longtime C E O of Cave. Uh, he's been at Cave for twenty-six years as the C E O. Um, as announced his retirement effective June thirtieth. The Executive uh Committee or Executive Board um met several times and um of which I am a member. Um, and we chose not to go out for a major search. We chose to uh recommend to the full board uh the appointment of Patrice McCarthy. Now, many of you know Patrice, you've seen her around the state. Um, she's been at Cave for thirty-one years and in fact, before Bob came in, um, she was the interim director uh after being there for a few years. So um and she has stayed on and worked hand in hand with Bob. In fact, sometimes we weren't sure who was uh the director and who was the deputy director. So uh, um, the board uh so the Executive Committee recommended to the full board uh the appointment of Patrice McCarthy and um and after uh a robust discussion, robust discussion. Uh, Patrice was unanimously selected as the new Executive Director of Cave um effective uh July first, effective July first. Uh, anything you want to add, Mr. Wilkerson, as a board member?
I think you covered it well. Um, I think that, you know, as you mentioned, we did have a very robust conversation and um but I think everybody has, stands behind Patrice. She's a strong leader. She's been in the, in the trenches for many years. Uh, we're excited for, you know, what she's gonna bring um in the direction that she's taking Cave. Um, and you know, we're, we're looking forward to Bloomfield being at the table as well in these um, in these next couple of years as she takes the helm.
You got it. And uh, that's pretty much it for Cave Update. So we're trying to close out the school year as, as everybody is trying to do. Um, board comments? Mr. Ike?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I just got uh three housekeeping things. Um, and number one, I think at the one committee meetings, I asked if we could get a list of school bus companies in the state of Connecticut. And as I still was looking at the the Department of Education and I, and motor vehicles, I couldn't find it. Number two, I was so pleasant to see we had two students from the city of Hartford at Gems. Could we, could we get a list of where, what towns and cities, students uh who attend Gems, just, just for my edification, perhaps edification to the entire community. Number three, I want to thank the uh school district for their help with the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Democratic Town Committee Primary. I had, I interfaced with, as the administrative assistant, I met with the custodians, with the head of, head of facilities. The people were outstanding, the custodians, everyone was outstanding. School was in session and we didn't have one problem in the schools. Four out of five bipolar cases are in the schools. I want to thank Dr. Thompson and his team. They were ever professional. Every time I went to those schools, they checked the phones, any problems. Staff there were outstanding, absolutely outstanding. And lastly, again, this is one of the better times of the year for me as a board member. We do the Cave Awards, the next month we do the Superintendent Awards. So I, this is very, very enjoyable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. Thank you, community.
Okay, as you uh, Mr. Ike, as you receive your uh requests on the buses as well as uh the towns represented by Gems, would you also like to see the towns represented by Whackums?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Oh, that's, I'll be excellent, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, and then just, and uh just lastly, we will be in, in the schools and we'll be in Gems next week uh doing voter registration. We'll be at the high school the following week doing voter registration. Thank you.
Hey, good for you. Um, Ms. Eastman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanted to say I enjoyed all the presentations today. Um, I love all the information. It's very helpful. Um, I'm happy with all the work that we're doing on Portrait of a Graduate. I'm excited to see uh everything kind of come together with that. Um, congratulations again to our Cave Student Leadership Award recipients. Uh, very proud of our students. So again, congratulations um to Miss Shandell Meyer. We're very excited to have you represent us as Athletic Director of the Year, putting Bloomfield on the map yet again. Um, lastly, I heard from Mr. McCarthy, one of my favorite music teachers ever, that there will be an outdoor concert and art show called Harmony on June second at six P M at the Human Services Building. So I'm really looking forward to all the work that our students have put into that. Um, you know, it's free, it's going to be outside, it's hopefully great weather. Um, so I'm asking everybody to just come out and support our students. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkerson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do want to also um thank Ms. Shandell Myers as well for, um, you know, putting Bloomfield on the map. Uh, also to Kristen, Daniel, Brian, um, Amira, Condoleezza and Ethan, you guys have done a wonderful job. I want to say congratulations on your uh, your recipient award from Cave um for your respective schools. It speaks to your leadership as well as the leadership of uh your team, uh your teaching team uh here. Um, also, thank you to Dr. Thompson on your leadership as well in the district. Um, you know, it shows through your uh leadership team um how effective you are with regard to your management. Um, and then also to um all those that have presented, I want to say great job. Um, also to kind of piggyback with uh what uh Mr. Ike mentioned, um, I'd also like to see some of those analytics. Um, um, you know, I'm not sure if this should be directed at Dr. Thompson um or Mr. Chair. Um, but I'm wondering if those analytics could be expanded for um the past couple of years to see how some of our um enrollment has shifted over the past couple of years uh with regard to people from outside districts. Um, is that a fair request?
Yes, it is. We can provide you that information.
Okay, yes. And then lastly, um, I, I do think it's appropriate in this form being that um, you know, we, we, during our last um uh D T C election, um, Ms. Lynette Eastman was elected as the Chair of the D C C. I don't want to just, you know, give my congratulations to her as well, um, you know, for leading that, uh, leading our, our Democratic Party. So congratulations to you and um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You will. Mr. Fryman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, once again, another excellent meeting. Providing an, an outstanding education to our community and I'm so glad many are able to join us and see what we're doing here. As we come to the end of the year, I so enjoy, we were able to give out presentations and have some of our young people come forward. Hopefully, once again, as mentioned, we love to make sure that we, you know, give them more recognize, more face-to-face recognition. Hopefully, that will come soon. I also want to rec, um, mention that there are so many excellent programs that are going to be taking place and I know Bob and I will be the first ones there at the Bluefield High School when we do our international cultural fair. Um, even a couple of weeks and of course, uh, we have our spring concerts. And as Lynette also mentioned, the Harmony Concert, which will be our district-wide concert coming up as well. There's so many events and our graduation. Remember, young people, even though you're graduating in a few weeks, um, if you ever need us, have questions about education, need assistance, we are a family. We're always here for you. So um, once again, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We wish you everyone a good evening.
Thank you. Um, I also just wanted to say another thank you to uh Dr. Thompson and the entire professional Portrait of a Graduate uh team uh for the outstanding presentation and the continued follow-up that they are doing uh with that. Um, Mr. Ike, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick in a third group, which we sometimes forget about. We have the Har, the Harris uh Agri Science.
Yes, yes, yes.
Which is also a magnet school. So uh, so we'll, we'll get you figures on all of that, well, for all of us, all of us. So when Dr. Thompson has it sent out, that'll come out to everyone, okay? Um, and Mr. Wilkerson, you'll pay for that. You uh, you stole my thunder. Uh, because I was, thought I was gonna be the first one to congratulate Ms. Eastman.
Me too. I'm sorry, Ms. Eastman. I meant to congratulate you too. Uh, yeah, very good. Congratulations. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
It's all right. But uh, no, big congratulations to Lynette. Uh, she's taken on a big job, so we will all have to keep her in our prayers. Because she should probably get off this call and have to get on another call. So uh, and especially right now, we're in the middle of the caucus uh season. So things are a little crazy. And finally, a uh belated Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Uh, I'm uh, I'm in Williamsburg, Virginia, and I have a granddaughter who graduated from Hampton University on Mother's Day. So uh, I'm enjoying myself and I'm a proud grandfather. And uh, so having a good time, having a good time, taking some needed time uh for family. Um, Mr. Ike?
Yes, sir. Mr. Damon, so move.
Ms. Meeseman?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we are adjourned.
All right, have a good time, Mr. Eastman.
Thank you.
It's cold down there?
It's not warm, man. It's, it's uh uh sixteen, sixty-one.
Wow, that's surprising.